Good morning, everybody. We begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. And then I'll have Jason Smith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting of May ninth, twenty twenty four. On Zoom, I see we have Captain Stacy, we have the Sheriff's Department.
Hold on.
Good morning.
With Captain Mann and the Major. We have Jude Gates in Zoom as well, and Leila is joining us from Zoom land as well. In the room.
Thank you, Henry.
Oh, Jason Henry came in too?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And in the room, we have Pat Conway, our attorney, Chuck Nicholson, mine it's, we have Christian Coyle.
Morning.
Do. We have Jason Smith, we have Autumn Newsom, and we have Julie Hoyt and myself, Brian Sherricello. So we'll begin with openings. The Engineering Service for Wastewater Treatment Facility.
Sure. I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Sorry. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. For wastewater treatment storage shed?
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion in this motion? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Award for the ruggedized, is that even a word? I guess it is. Mobile data computers and mobile printers for the Sheriff's Office.
I move to award the proposal for ruggedized mobile data computers and mobile data can and mobile printers to connection for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Uh, just briefly, this was, there were a number of bid, there are actually a few bids that met the criteria in this case. This was the lowest bid that met all of the specifications for the there.
Further discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Where the consent agenda, in our packets, we have the Long Term Care Quality Assurance Performance Improvement Plan or Update, I'm sorry. Would anyone like to chime in on that at all?
This is just our quarterly compliance or QAPI meeting. I just wanted to share with you all the quality work that the community's been doing in long-term care and in assisted living community to continue with the good work that we do. So we are on target, on task with meeting our goals for the first quarter.
Next.
True. Other question on the, it appears that we received pages from a PowerPoint. You actually have that PowerPoint for, and who attends to see that?
Oh, it's available to all of our staff. We open it up to even residents if they would like to participate. But our frontline staff is invited, all of our management and mid-management. We also invited to all of our providers. So we have all of our five physicians that participate, including our medical director. We also have our lab x-ray. We have, oh goodness, we have our medical vendors. We open it up to a lot.
Yeah, I just, just to clarify, is there a meeting where you put on the show?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. If you would like to participate, you're welcome.
I'd like to go to the next one.
Sure, it's about two hours long, and we do it every quarter.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, so just a few observations. One, thank, I mean, you guys are busy. Very, very busy. From infection prevention to marketing strategy to education to, and what, I mean, you are busy. And to me, the summation was really highlighted in the satisfaction survey. And what we show from overall satisfaction is in the, you know, nineties, eighties to nineties and almost in a lot, almost every single area, which is, you know, pretty impressive. The only place that it looks like there's a little less satisfaction is in food, and I know that that is something that's been on the forefront of everybody's efforts and continue to be, but to the extent that for the elements we can, we have more control over. I mean, the satisfaction is incredibly high and including like ninety-seven and ninety-six and safety. So it's a real testament to the work of the group as well as everybody in terms of what the, you know, when we talk about the return on investment of all this, these efforts, which really fundamentally boils down to how do the residents feel? Because those are our clients and that satisfaction is really great, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, I'm gonna go also in our packets. It's the Long Term Care twenty twenty-four Compliance Work Plan. Jason, you want to just give a synopsis on that?
Every quarter I provide you with an update. You approve the work plan at the beginning of the year. This is just a representation of all of our compliance efforts that we are mandated to comply with. So I just like to keep the board aware of where we are with the work plan, and we are on target, on task with meeting those objectives.
Well, included in that, a lot of safety compliance of compliance plans that have been completed. A lot of work completed when we look review that spreadsheet, which it has, you know, OSHA, license verification, all things that are critical per survey. And it's really nice to see that they're completed, you know, at the start, many of these items could completed in the, I guess, third quarter, but by the third quarter, but the first quarter of the fiscal year, which is when we are starting our process of getting ready for surveys, so.
I, I don't go into all the detail because there is a lot of work that, you know, I, I'm just presenting the high level to you, just the summary, but there is a lot of, a lot of people participate in this program. We do quarterly meetings in addition, but there's a lot of backwork that gets done and touches multiple departments and divisions to make sure that we are meeting CMS standards, but also the Department of Justice and the OIG.
This work then is so critical to helping us keep a, you know, having do well in survey.
Yes, yes. I would not say, there is a reason why we, we've been rated five star and efficiency free for two years. It seems like the plans are all employees, all these people are employees, so good job. Let's move on to payroll.
Yeah, I was just, okay, I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, ten dollars and seven cents for the period ended May fourth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? If not, I'll find like.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at, I mean, we're trending, we're trending a little lighter, but right in the same ballpark of where we on the light side of consistent.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Reports, any commissioners want to share any info?
I would just say, I went over to the Department of Corrections to say thanks to some of the correctional officers because it's National Correctional Officers Week. There are, I know Superintendent Henry will go into more detail, but there are so many great things happening over there from, you know, Mike Evans on manning the barbecue for cooking food for all the chefs to, to prizes that the community donated through a Raffle program through Quahog. There are just lots of great things, and Superintendent Henry will speak to that, but it was nice to go over there and talk to a few of the officers and say thanks.
Yeah. Commissioner Godu, do you have anything?
Nope.
I also believe it's, I want to say it's, it's National Nurses Week.
That's correct.
Right.
So I want to wish all of our nursing staff, you know, kudos for jobs well done, and we recognize you for all the work that you do here, and we have a little day in for them, and it's, we're very appreciative.
And just the other point is, last Friday, I think we were all, just for everybody in Zoom land, we had an executive, third quarter executive committee meeting with the delegation. There were a number of line item transfers, which is not, not surprising at this time of year, and especially given sort of the inflationary impacts. We had a really good, I think overall, the meeting went really well. The members of the delegation seemed to understand the challenges we're facing and have been very supportive, and we appreciate that. And all the line item transfers were approved, so that's great, and so we can continue operations through the end of the fourth quarter.
Yeah. Commissioner Godu, do you have anything?
No.
Just on the notes of the, for, is, Commissioner Coyle reminded me on the budgets that I try to attend as many budgets, delegation budget meetings as much as I can because it's actually a commissioner's budget. And I feel that if delegation members have questions, that, you know, a commissioner should be there to, to answer those questions. I was not able to meet this Monday because I had, I had business to attend, but I'm going to ask Chuck right now, were there any changes?
No, that's categorical assistance and no, there are no changes.
So that means only one department, which is the non-county specials, had an increase over the commissioner's budget of eleven thousand dollars. Everybody else was agreed with the commissioner's budget, correct?
There is a technicality that because of the elected officials' salary subcommittee, because of the voted approved changes at the subcommittee level for elected officials, there are going to be five other departments that disfor the elected official line plus the related lines of FICA and where applicable retirement.
Okay.
But.
Anything else?
Yeah, no, no other changes to operating.
No, no, they all had good questions. We answered them as best we can. They, they're all updated as to what's going on, so I think that they sort of agreed with, for the most part, they agreed with the commissioners, and I just wanted to share that, but.
And then we should also acknowledge, congratulations to Attorney Conway for the Hands of Hope Everyday Hero Award.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. So just another great work happening all around the county.
Yep. Okay, let's do the line item transfer in for facilities.
I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars dated May sixth, twenty twenty-four, transferring from the expendable equipment to purchase services as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this?
Just quickly, Jude, how are you on from the expendable equipment? Will you be okay on that end?
I know we, we had planned to replace a three-bay sink down in dietary to a tune of about four thousand dollars. We're going to put that off until next year, just to be safe.
Are we, you're okay pulling off?
Yeah, we're okay.
Okay.
We'll be all right. I think they would love to have it replaced now, but a few more months isn't going to make, operationally isn't going to affect them that much, and we really need to take care of the fire sprinklers, so. It was kind of a, yeah.
No brainer.
Sort of, yeah.
What, want versus need?
Exactly.
On the mo, thanks Jude. On the motion, Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Finance Office, Harvey Construction AP warrant.
I move to approve a Harvey Construction warrant in the amount of three million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Abstained.
Commissioner Coyle?
I would just, just in, we could get a significant amount of support and backup for this. I note that, I was trying, I didn't get.
Okay, I'm, I'm allowing her to respond.
I didn't get to, I, you called it too fast. I'm sorry, I was just pulling it off. Yeah, the, I mean, there is a ton of backup. There's support in the extent of photos and include and, you know, invoices. I would just like to say, I mean, the building looks great. I cannot believe every day, like, you know, you can just see the progress driving down North Road, and it's really impressive. They're already underway with some of the mechanicals on the backside, and that's pretty exciting. When you get onto mechanicals, the roof looks great. Back end, that we don't really see that, which is going to be community corrections, is advancing at a incredibly rapid pace. And it's a little bit less obvious from the street, but if you go back, there is pretty impressive, so.
Yeah. And since we, since we're discussing that part of it, I will say that the delegation's building committee also met last week. They go over, they meet quite often. They've got eyes on the building from the delegation's point of view. And my understanding is, I wasn't there, but my understanding is they took a tour of the, the building and speaking to Mike Edgar, who's the chair of that, everything seems to be moving along well.
And that's. Well, I, I just like to, I mean, just since we're, I, I'm abstaining because there, the, although there is a lot of backup, it's not complete. There's twenty, thirty thousand dollars worth of expenses that we don't have receipts for. I don't suspect any fraud, and that's why I'm not voting no. But it's, I don't like the business practice, and it's, it's, that's why I'm abstaining from both.
That's fine. All right, so I think we've talked out, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu, you've already abstained, right? And I'm voting yes. So it's two, zero, and we want to abstain. We had a, we, we're gonna wait, we'd table on cross insurance for now, then we're gonna go to line item transfer DOC to LTC.
I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars dated April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, transferring from the Department of Corrections Union Staff Line, ER FICA line and employer retirement line to long-term care nursing staff line as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this one?
I think everybody's aware that the, you know, that contracted nursing is, has just skyrocketed in cost, and we are all working really hard to try to come up with a solution to reduce that number by getting more in-staff, you know, in-house staff. I, I think in this instance, this is like the perfect example of the way department heads and departments work together to support one another. And so, thank you to, I mean, it's a, it takes a village. Thanks to Superintendent Henry, thanks to Chuck, thanks to Minister Smith, everybody working together to try to, you know, do the best for the county as a whole, and we see this time and time again, and this line item transfer is just one example of it.
Yep. Any other comments? I'll agree with Commissioner Coyle. Really nice to see that, ever since I've been here, there's apartment heads really help each other throughout, and they're really kind of, really nice to see that. And when one department has got a little bit of a need there, everyone comes through, so it's happened consistently over the three years, so the team here is really on the ball, and congratulations to anybody on, on getting that done. So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes. LTC and finance to LDC.
Okay, so I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of five hundred and eighty thousand dated May seventh, twenty twenty-four, transferring from many expense lines to long-term care nursing staff lines as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this one?
More of the same.
All right, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Travel and training request.
I move to approve a travel and training request for a finance employee BW to attend the UKG Aspire Conference held November eleventh through fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at an estimated total cost of four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-six cents as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
These are, we usually send someone every year.
Yeah, this is for Ben to go.
And Ben, you know, he's the guy to go in terms of a lot of the work he's doing with UKG.
Yeah, he talks a lot with the support people over there, and sometimes they also learn from him, actually, when he goes. So it's, it's good for him to be there because he really truly makes it a productive conference for the county. People may not see it.
Talk about an ROI for the county, seriously.
I'm glad we just, I'm glad we got him back. Anyway, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Human Resources Destruction, the LNA Apprentice Program Proposals.
I move to approve, approve the proposed change to the LNA Apprentice Program as outlined in the memo submitted by the Senior Director of Human Resources and allow the Senior Director of Human Resources to obtain legal review of a proposed draft student commitment contract. Further utilize funds from the ARPA project under Trade Free Expenditure Category two point seven, job training assistance not to exceed twenty-six hundred dollars per enrolled student as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Commissioner Godu?
We, we need employees. This is to support young people who are looking to get into healthcare. This is a great opportunity. We pay for the schools. We're asking for a one-year commitment to work here once you get the license, and I can assure you that it is a great working environment and, and encourage people to take advantage of that.
And it includes a sign-on bonus. In addition, the reason, and just for Zoom land people, the, before the program was structured, where we needed, but we were doing the training schooling in-house, but required five participants at once, now anyone can come on board and then try and sign up. We're going to pay for the schooling at a outsourced and then do apprenticeship here. It is a, to Commissioner, good news point, it is a wonderful program. And, and as we talked about, trying to efforts we're all making collectively and the, you know, putting our heads together to try to figure out a better way for recruiting more in-house employees. This is just one example of that.
Yeah. All right, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Wellness Concepts Service Agreement?
I move to approve the Wellness Concepts Service Agreement for the May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four hybrid cooking class and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Services.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? Commissioner Godu?
I only have question why they didn't employ me to help with the cooking class, but aside from that, this is a, a, a good opportunity for everybody to have a little fun.
I'm sure they welcome you in, Commissioner.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Top Stitch Master Service Agreement?
I move to approve the Master Service Agreement for the Managed Uniform Program with top stitch scrubs and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on this topic? Hearing none, Commissioner Coyle?
Just one question. I, I know we saw the, there were obviously the Primex changes with respect to the arbit, the binding state laws as well as the indemnification terms or insurance things. Were those resolved with, I assume they were resolved pretty easily?
Yeah, we told them the changes that were recommended, and they just made them and sent it right back. They didn't have any problems. Great.
Any other further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I just want to say thank you. We've been having a lot of issues with uniform agent companies coming in, and it is a nice benefit for our staff. And so thank you for allowing us to have, there's going to be a different format, but at least employees will be able to utilize this benefit now.
Yeah, just one more perk for saying for employees.
All right, now to department head updates. And since Jason, you were just speaking, I will let you go first.
Sure, so just some fun. We had Macy's Day here, so we have a Macy's area within the nursing home. And over the years, Macy's has been filling up very quickly, so we decided to have a Macy's sale. And so residents were able to come down and do some shopping for free, so it was nice. So we're, we had a five-item maximal. So we're doing some spring cleaning, but also with their closets and some new items, so residents really enjoyed that activity. In addition, I provided my board report, but just a few highlights. In addition to that is Kendra, Assistant Living Administrator. She was recognized last evening for the new Assistant Living Administrator Award with the American College of Healthcare Administrators. So that was, I spoke with her this morning, and she was really excited about that. The Compliance Work Plan, which you've all reviewed today, and just, just a couple of things here as far as regards to open positions, I checked with Autumn yesterday. We're actually up, in my board report, I put one twenty-seven. It's actually now one twenty-nine open direct care workers. That's full-time, part-time for DM. In addition to that, that means that we have fifty active direct care employees on the floor. And then as of this week, that's eighty-four agency employees. On four seventeen, I reported that we had a hundred and seven, so we are decreasing that amount. Within the past sixteen days, we cut eight hundred and twenty-three hours. That's a combination of agency employees and our own staff asking if they wanted to leave early or if they wanted a day off. So it's a combination of hours, so.
So the two month, about fifty thousand dollars, right?
Using the, yeah, yeah, I, I, as you know, I like to be conservative with my budget numbers, so I use the low part of sixty, sixty dollars in the course, so. In addition to that, yesterday, several of us, including Commissioner Kusson, attended the, our monthly check-in with the grant with the Bureau Chief of DHHS and the finance team. So every month, we're providing a report, we're doing a check-in, and so far, I think that they're impressed with the momentum that we're, we're at at this point. So hopefully next month, we'll be able to continue and recruit and get a software system in place and start looking at some other opportunities for the new fiscal year of July, when we're able to purchase some equipment and marketing items for that. Yes, it is National Nurses Week, but we typically celebrate our LNA's and nurses and the whole community next week during National Nursing Home. So that's next week, and we have several activities and some events planned that are fiscally responsible, so. So we'll be enjoying that next week.
Very good. Thank you, Jason. Got to go to Autumn.
Sure. So speaking of the grant fund, we were successful in offering a program manager position. That's kind of our first position to really truly get the ball rolling when it comes to recruiting for the other positions. So we're in the pre-hire process and hoping to get this person started within the next few days. Yeah, recently, we had a dispatch operator and a deputy sheriff start on May sixth. In the works, we have our equipment maintenance and supply technician, a weekend or two LNA, as well as two assistant county attorneys. I believe we have some corrections officers starting. I'm not too sure what the numbers are on that just yet, but they are going through the pre-hire process. And then when it comes to recruiting, very heavily recruiting for the Director of Nursing, the Assistant Director of Long-Term Care, and the Infection Preventionist and Clinical Educator, trying to sponsor those as much as possible, get all the applicants in that we can for those positions. We're interviewing for the Grant Writer position and Chuck's department starting next week. And then next week, starting Tuesday, I am off to the recruiting conference in Austin, so that will be.
They should not go in there in July.
Oh, yes.
All right, still pretty nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like things are picking up.
Yep, yep, we're on a, on a roll.
Very good. Julie Hoyt, from HR Department, I was going to say.
I'll go work in finance, sure. Well, I only have two words to offer, and that is open enrollment. That is my personal focus, as well as anyone I can grab in the department to help with that. So this is our first open enrollment in the UKG new system, so there's a lot of upfront work that needs to be done before employees can get in there, so that's keeping us busy.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, so the time ahead, you heard it. Let's let everybody know about the open enrollment. There's always seems to be somebody at the end that's coming in late to the game, so. If we can share that information, that'd be great. Pat Conway?
Yes, good morning. Everything's going pretty well. We have hired a couple of assistant county attorneys. I think one is starting on May twentieth, I believe. We just made, or were about to make an offer to a third person as an assistant county attorney. We do have a couple of legal assistant positions open that we're trying to fill, and we'll be interviewing for those. We're super busy. The grand jury going this week, gearing up for trials, May and June. It's, it's going flat.
Good. Is the summers typically busier than other times?
Generally, we used to, we actually used to have a couple of weeks off in August where we didn't have trials, but they stopped doing that. And so typically summers are busy too.
All right.
Yeah.
It's good to see you hit that.
I, I will actually be brief this time about the lack, or the lack of things going on, but obviously budgets, we're right in the middle of the stages, going to be budgets like the third of the five stages. like the third of the five stages. So um basically we do know all the subcommittee numbers will be before. And so we'll be putting that um amount, you know, those numbers out. And then we'll also have a draft set of resolutions that I'll be working with Cheryl early as well, the delegation coordinator. And um and one highlight that we're looking to have in those resolutions is that the the I feel what resolution number might be seven or something like that, but the one that cites encumbrances will be that piece will be coming out. Because it does make sense for the delegation to vote on encumbrances, which are really components of prior year approved appropriations.
Yeah.
Why approve those all over again? It doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
I think that might have been a lingering thing from my predecessor. So that will be proposed be coming out of the resolution, which means that departments, while we might be asking for your preliminary encumbrances, you will have until basically the middle of July to finalize your encumbrances. So you can have more certainty. So that's that's good news, I think, for all all departments. Especially those that, you know, utilize purchase orders quite a bit. And because you you know, because before we used to ask for your final numbers, like first week of of June. So and then I had to do multiple different versions of the budgets because of encumbrance changes. And so even though there's no effect to the proposed appropriations. But anyways, I'm busy with budgets. No surprise, obviously grants are still fun. And yes, Treasury did find some other data demographic data point to ask about. Now it's average months by demographic data point for assistance. Which obviously our system never did. So that's all
Nope.
manual. Yes, they keep on asking for new things.
Sure.
It's just not fun. So I had to re-ask for that to be on extension, but yes, that's one thing. Let's take up a little bit of time.
Really?
And we have to keep on doing that until they do the official closeout for ERA two, rent of emergency rental assistance two.
Okay.
Um just busy obviously with with IPR stuff, other filings, busy with single audits. Um just again, this overall busy, we discussed on with the payroll, that was a little bit messier than normal. That's because of some changes that UKG kinda hold on us as far as rounding. They changed the rounding system.
Double in, okay.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Um just on that note, I just wanted to, I I probably should have then mentioned this before. So next, next week, I think it's next week, right? Next week, the commissioners are meeting for AP only. So there will be no regular meeting, just to let you know, that we'll be in, we'll be in the Primex uh conference in Portsmouth. So the commissioners will meet um just to approve AP and then we're off. So just to let everybody know, heads up. So, all right. Gonna go to to the sheriff. Morning.
Good morning. Um we had a new deputy, Amanda Bebo. She came over from Stratum Police. Uh she's going through FTO right now. She started Monday. Uh we also had another dispatcher that started working for us on Monday also. Uh I gotta hand out to Autumn. She's doing a great job over there when it comes to recruiting, especially these dispatches. Uh we got a bunch of applications and looks like we're gonna be giving out two, possibly giving out two conditional office. We'll knock it down to like one position over there and we got a bunch of them coming in. So uh we'll fully staff with the deputies. Um but it's nice that the county works together as a team to try to get all these positions filled and I appreciate it. And that's it. Have a good week.
Hey, thank you. I'm gonna go to Jason Henry. I can barely see you, but I have a big, large coffee mu- uh pot up right in front of me, so. Go ahead, Jason.
Good morning. Uh huh. So as Commissioner Quell said, this week is National um Corrections slash Employees Appreciation Week plus niece uh Nurses Appreciation Week. So we have and still doing a lot of different things, anything from bringing meats to grill. Uh we got pizzas from the teams this coming Friday. We did a, we're doing a cornhole tournament with uh main prizes will be new brand of cornhole boards. Um popcorn, um a lot of raffle prizes. Um the Glendale is send a sheet cake over appreciation plus some um enhanced food for that as well with Prime Care. Um they've also stepped up and yesterday and yesterday, day before, they uh Tuesday, they sent over an ice cream truck um for staff, which was kind of, which was awesome of them to do that. So we've been trying to really work with them because I know that they're a vendor of ours, but it's still there, our medical, so they're still considered part of our staff. So we're working back and forth with Appreciation Week and it's going really, really well. So staff seems uh overly happy and um so knock on wood. Uh we do have another couple of new hires that we've starting next week is when they're starting. We're hovering still around about fourteen open positions, which is great for when we, you know, um compared to where we were about a year and a half ago. So we're doing well.
Jolly.
You know, we we, you know, we have some that leave, some some that stay, but overall we're doing really, really well. Uh that being said, we had a small little COVID outbreak of uh three inmates, one staff. Um but it's been isolated. Uh I would also like to point out, just I sent an email to Commissioner Coyle and um Chris Bashaw a second ago. Uh Bill one-seven-four-three, which is considered the Adam Montgomery Bill, um where it's gonna require the jails to basically um make any inmate that the judge says ignore any inmate that is required to be at their sentencing or anything else to take him to court, no matter how we get him there. Um it places some liability on the county uh because of injuries maybe to staff or that individual. So that's gonna be, uh I have to call some some reps and some um senators, because they also changed some other wording inside of that doesn't work for the jails. Uh um if it if it passes, it's gonna cost some liability and uh uh Chuck, I'd suggest you take a look at it with Chris, because of some of the wording they put inside there, that's gonna affect both of us having to deal with those inmates.
So.
Last thing like.
Is he, is he, is he in our system?
No. No, but the point is that you could have any, if someone's refusing transport, then to the act that require multiple the staff to try to physically move someone who doesn't want to be moved is like a recipe for disaster in terms of safety for all the officers doing the moving, for the transport team with the Sheriff's Department and for the actual inmate, who it's just like fraught with peril.
Uh yeah, I was just curious whether that would replace, but obviously quite profile case and um you know, people are charged up about that issue, especially the Montgomery case with um.
They are. It it's a very political issue. It's very, it's an emotional issue. Um and I never recommend doing bills when people are emotional. As um someone like him, making him go to court for reading, so they can be there for somebody read impact statement. Well, if he killed his own daughter, do you think he really cares about somebody's impact statement? Um so I hate putting our staff in in harms way, the sheriff's staff in harms way, uh lawsuits, a possible lawsuits, everything else. So the super tents have been against it. Um from the get-go, some of the chiefs of police just had some wording they wanted in there, but it's actually not very good wording, because if you read it correctly, Chuck, take real look at it. It looks like you guys would have to ones going hands-on the way they've kind of written it rather than my staff. Um because they don't really understand how to put a bill together that correlates to county corrections. Um so there's a lot of work on this that I hope does not go through.
And then.
I'll leave in a pot. Go ahead.
And we're talking, but I was just gonna just emphasize that the individual at their pre-trial, they're always gonna be in the county. So it's not like this is like a uh state prison problem. This is a very specific county problem.
So.
Objection.
Yeah, so I I get it. I get the side that county uh the department corrections uh and the police are looking at. I I understand that both side of it. Um on the flip side, though, this is just me speaking personally about it. Um you know, I think he should be made so to hear the lives that he affected. Basically, have a chance to look them in the eyes while they tell them how their lives have been disrupted. I think it's a horrible case. Do get it's political, I get it. Uh but I, you know, I feel that he he should face these people. But anyway, that's beside the point. I think both sides make a good point and uh.
Yeah, can I say something about it?
Yeah, go ahead.
I I do think there's a significant um safety problem. You have had folks, it doesn't happen that often, but people do refuse to get transported. It's not just for sentencing hearings. It can be for trials. It can be for bail hearings. It can be what for whatever type of hearing. And normally, folks who do that are not in a good place and they're very unstable. Um and it can cause issues and safety problems for for everybody involved, including the bailiffs and the courthouse, the judges, the prosecutors, the defense attorneys. Um so I it definitely causing a lot of problems there. I would say that you know, what I would say from a victim's perspective, just in terms of working with victims all these years, it's not necessarily about how it impacts the defendant when they make these statements. It's for the victims. The victims make these statements because it they they want to be heard. So it's 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 really, it's difficult for a victim when when they're not heard. They don't have an opportunity to be heard. And so I can understand why victims are upset about it. I don't know if there's some other way that we can work it out. Like, I don't know, put put a video and the guy's cell, like put a phone in his cell, like something so he has to listen to what they're what they're or she has to listen to what they're saying. But uh when you look at the risks and the benefits, it's just it it's it's really tough. It's a tough issue.
And Patta had that same thought, which is like, could we move them to the suicide prevention cells, which have the cameras or something and may have basically put the WebEx, you know, put the camera there to participate via WebEx. There may be alternatives that would be way safer for everyone involved and still fulfill the obligations of giving the victim an opportunity to take back some of the power lost in the portion of the time here.
I testified to some of that, the same that the video would be a great way to go, because right now there's nothing in a bill to use video. Um and again, it's also, we do not, we train staff on purpose not to go inside of cells when somebody's actively engaged and where they're going to assault us. If they're not destroying county property or self-harm, the cells are built for a reason and a way that they can kick it, do other things, that it's not gonna cause damage. So it is a different philosophy set that we'd have to go in after them. And I just, I, you know, and I understand that the victims want an opportunity and I I fully get that. I just out trying to look at everybody's, um you know, I hate to have a staff member come out and all of a sudden severely get hurt because all because we want to take somebody to the court of a person who doesn't care if you read impact statement, who also may cause issues to the the deputies or bailiffs at the courtroom where they could get hurt all over this. And again, it's a very emotional subject and I and I fully understand it, just that I'm I really am concerned about what may happen to um the individual who might be mentally ill and doesn't allow for that. Um so I don't know. I'm just concerned.
All right, well, that's left up to the state to take decide how they want to know that, but.
Well, that, I'll end it, I'll end it a positive note. Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Uh and a positive note, so this past week, um we had an op- we've had an open sergeant position. We did finish testing and promotions and I'm very happy to promote that Officer Cassamero, uh she was promoted yesterday to sergeant. She is a wonderful success story. She is actually from Brazil. She's only been in the country five years. Um she was promoted to corporal very quickly within a year, um because again, she put the time and energy in. She loves this job, passionate about it, and she's doing a fantastic job. Her goal says she wants, she wants to be the very first female lieutenant that the jail's ever had, and I do believe she will be, and if not further. Um so we're 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 very excited for her to to start as sergeant come Monday, which leaves us o- opening for a corporal position. But I just want to say um she's an awesome addition and I'm I'm very proud.
Very good.
That's all.
Thanks for sharing that with us. All right, go to Ju Gates.
Good morning, everyone. All's well in facilities. We are, as usual, busy. Um that is really good news about the encumbrance numbers check. That'd be great. Um let's see, what do I have to tell you about this week? Long-range planning Chuck and I attended yesterday. I believe it was their last subcommittee. It was well received. We had a lot of conversation. They didn't make any changes, but I think they were well pleased with the work that we gave them. So that went well. Um we, I think I mentioned to you, I was meeting with the engineer up at DES who is reviewing our spray irrigation site with regard to PFAS. He's looking at our well number four permit. Like he's involved in a lot of the issues that we're dealing with here at the county. One of the things that he brought up is that um floor strippers and waxers are a huge source of PFAS when the waste is is dumped down the drains. And so I talked to um via Jason Smith, I talked to their environmental services leader, Sam. And um they only have one building where they still strip and wax. That one hasn't been done for about six months. It's Driscoll Building, which fortunately um there's not a lot of activity in there right now. We're gonna hold off on having that work done in that building until we can figure out. The solution is to containerize the waste rather than dump it down the drains and then somehow get rid of it by way of a hazmat disposal. So I I we're trying to just not create it at this point. I talked to Jason Henry as well. Um they have a fair amount that's done in the jail. We're trying to come up with another solution for them. We have a few floors that are scheduled for replacement. We're going to um go to the LVT luxury vinyl tile or the two-by-four rubber tiles. They don't use wax and strippers. They actually clean them with water. So it's a great solution for us. Um and that's kind of the path we're taking on. And there is no VCT at all, no wax floors at all in the new building either. So there's no risk over there. So that's good. Um this week is our first week with two of our very own Rockingham County employee plumbers. We're pretty excited with that. Friday was the last day we had the outside contractor here. So um one of them is working in the jail this week. He's training and getting some work done on the bubblers. And the other one is um picking up some wo- work orders in the nursing home. So making really good progress on that front. We still have a couple of shift tech openings, but we're making progress.
That's good.
All's well. Thank you.
Right, thanks, Ju.
Yep.
Kathy Stacy?
Good morning.
Morning.
I don't have much to report. We're just, you know, plugging along, plugging along. But Jason Henry, I have a staff member who's from Brazil as well. We should get these two ladies connected, because yeah, she she hasn't been here only a couple of years. So it's uh interesting. It's it's pretty interesting. But uh yeah, that's pretty much. I really just here to listen and see what's going on around the county. Thank you.
Thanks, Cal. Think I've got every, oh, Leila. Leila, Leila's feeling a little under the weather this week, but she's all set, okay. So um I wanna, I wanna thank Commissioner Coyle for setting up the on the Zoom meeting and getting everything ready, because I certainly couldn't have done it. I don't know.
We're not done yet.
Anyway, uh so we're gonna go on to new business, old business?
Yes, so we have some new business, which is an exception request to walk in and I moved, um does anybody have anything else before I go to go with that? Okay, um I move to uh approve an exception request, uh Personnel Policy seven-point-three new appointment rate to uh higher SS um above the midpoint for the position of Equipment Maintenance and Supply Technician at an hourly rate of twenty-five dollars an hour as recommended by the Administrator of Long-Term Care Services.
Second motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
This position replaces uh Harry, uh who retired after forty-eight years.
Okay, perfect. On the motion, Commissioner Quell?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Um is there any old business? I don't think so. I think we're all set. So I'm gonna add, I'm gonna call the public comment. I don't see anybody here physically or on Zoom public. But um if we don't have that, then I will entertain a motion to go into non-public.
I move to enter into non-public pursuant to N U N A colon three regarding personnel matters.
Second motion's been made and seconded on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, everybody. Uh keep up the good work. Have a great day and have a great weekend.
Sorry, can I retract my um there, Leila, of course, coming from afar, remind us, we have, but we do have one other walk-in with it, which is an inmate administrative transfer, which I dropped the ball and made in that motion.
All right.
Um so I'm gonna retract uh my um I'm gonna retract my uh movement movement to enter into non-public. And I'm gonna make the following motion. See, I knew I just, I knew.
We were almost there.
Approve a uh uh inmate administrative transfer pursuant to R Z thirty-B twenty-one transferring an inmate to Carroll County, uh um one inmate to Carroll County on five uh three twenty-four and uh receiving an inmate from Sullivan County on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Second motion made and seconded on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, now we're on to non-public.
Of course, thank you, Leila, even from afar.
So on the motion to go into non-public, which was seconded by Commissioner Godu, um on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now, everybody have a great weekend. And I vote yes. Now, everybody have a great weekend. Thank you. And we're gonna take a couple of minutes.
Okay, we've, uh, we're just in non-public on a single topic and I move to seal the minutes indefinitely because, uh, divulgence of the information could affect the reputation of a member, uh, an individual other than a member of this board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. We don't have anything else bef- in front of us, so I'll introduce the motion for adjourned.
I'm so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made. All those are famous. Say hi.
Hi.
All right.
We are adjourned. Have a great week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Layla.
Yeah, hit the stop button.
I'm glad.
Thank you.